Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Hi, everybody. Good evening, everyone. To begin with, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll for us.
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Bonilla is recused from this meeting due to his residence being close to the item. And Mayor Gothols.
Here.
I'm going to take a moment just to lay out what's going to happen. First, we have a brief presentation, welcome to this public meeting. The topic is the parking track. I know that many people feel very strongly about this issue. In order for everyone to fully participate in this meeting, we have to be respectful of everyone. And for that reason, I'm not, I'm going to ask people to refrain from loud noises, clapping, cheering, anything like that. There are going to be people who express differences of opinion, and we're here tonight just to try to move forward at the best we can. So we will have a presentation tonight from Caltrain. Then we will have questions from the council. Then we will go to public comment. During the public comment period, there will be organized presentations by two different groups, which will have a maximum of 15 minutes each. Before we take additional public comment, I'm going to ask for a show of hands to see how many people want to speak. I'm going to do the very best we can to get everyone an opportunity to speak during that period of time. It may mean that we have to cut the amount of time that each person gets to speak down to just a minute or two, so that everyone can have their thoughts heard. We also had many other public meetings on this issue, so I'm hoping that people will only use this time to give us additional comments that they haven't said before. With that having been said, I'm going to turn it over to Caltrain to give us their presentation.
Hello, council members, staff and members of the public. Thank you for having us here today. I have a couple of brief comments to provide before I turn it over to Rafael to provide the technical assessment. Caltrain, as you recall, has over a dozen passing tracks throughout the 51 miles. Many are just as close to residential buildings as the one that's proposed in San Mateo. In the many years that we've had those parking tracks, we haven't had complaints from those communities about light, noise, or impact to their property value. The parking tracks are essential part of maintaining a safe railroad, and the railroad cannot function and serve the 65,000 riders a day if we don't have them. There was a parking track in San Mateo that's been used by Caltrain for 25 years, and replacement is the only option. As many know, today, the area that's originally proposed location can allow for multiple uses, trucks going in and out, equipment, storage. When we talk about that location becoming a parking track, it would limit its future use, especially when it would have an electrified system over top that would reduce that use even further. Why, we certainly would have liked to redo the initial communication at the beginning of this process. We have certainly been on board, pun intended, to, in the last eight months, be fully engaged on this issue. And we really have devoted a lot of time and energy and staff expertise to this. What we were asked to do at the last council was a deeper dive on the analysis on several new community-generated options, and I can assure you that a host of Caltrain experts have been involved in that analysis. I'm Cillian Rafael Thunder. But there are rail standards that were not taken into account by the community, and therefore these options are not feasible, and that there is no amount of additional engineering work that we could do to make them feasible. And it is not for a lack of effort or trying. We certainly would love to have another option if there was one that worked. We know we'll continue to have a relationship with the council and the community well beyond this meeting, as we work to electrify the Caltrain corridor that will reduce environmental pollution throughout the corridor, it'll reduce engine noises, and reduce congestion. We know this is a long-term partnership, and we look forward to continue to build in on that. And I'd like to turn it over to Rafael now to give the brief technical analysis on the options that we were asked to look at.
Casey, I want to thank you very much for that presentation. I do think it's important to point out that this is a necessary improvement to the rail that needs to happen, and that electrification is where we're headed. I really appreciate you acknowledging some of the mistakes that were made in outreach early on. I know that it's never perfect, but we have a long relationship going forward, and so we want to make it better to the extent that we can. And I appreciate you doing the extra work that we asked for from the last meeting, and I look forward to Rafael's presentation on what the product of that deep dive has been. Thank you, Rafael.
Great, and thank you. So as was mentioned, during the last meeting that was held at the end of January, there was, in addition to the 29-plus options that have been generated from city staff, Caltrain, and the community at large, there was an additional three community-generated options, really subalternatives, that were presented. And upon your request, we've taken a deeper dive in these three to analyze whether they're viable from an engineering point of view, and that's what I'm going to focus on tonight. So the three alternatives are really variants of other options, two other options that were in the matrix of alternatives that we presented previously. So the first two options, labeled options 4A and 4B, are variants of an alternative, which was to utilize the existing Caltrain tracks south of Hayward Park, immediately south of 92, and, that wasn't part of the presentation, and essentially tie in right where the bridge is and then effectuate that change. The issue with that, as we'll go into later, is that the curved geometry requires extensive modifications to an existing canal. It involves creating a bridge over Burrell Creek, and many, many other cost drivers that made it prohibitive from a cost point of view, as well as some feasibility issues that have to do with high-speed rail and others. However, 4A and 4B are attempts to sort of work around that core problem by addressing the geometry problems, and that's what I'll focus on. So option 4A, as mentioned, is an attempt to work around the concerns with the minimum required curves, which would extend almost 1,000 feet that way, and would go across a canal, on a, over a bridge, and on a road to effectuate the change. So in this version, the question is, in lieu of utilizing the required curved geometry, could back-to-back crossovers be utilized to do the same thing? So I believe this model came from South San Francisco. It's an older grandfathered-in station with suboptimal track centers. And the thought was, well, you can use a crossover in roughly 200 feet. Why can't you just put two crossovers, as shown, tie it in immediately south of Hayward Park, avoid the canal, and still utilize the existing track, which was sort of the driver of option four? So the issues with this are, there's quite a few, but I'll focus on the big ones. So the first thing, and I think this is just a confusion, when we draw these things on a piece of paper, and I'm guilty as anyone, we always draw these switches just like it's literally an angle point, like it diverges at a single point in space. The reality is, these things are 116 feet long, and it would start well into the Hayward Park track and extend well past the columns of the 92 bridge, and in fact, conflict with the 92 bridge. So that applies to really any time we show those switches. It's easy to show them as just a single departure point, but they're quite, they're quite large. So the single biggest issue with this, and really the driver of option 4A, is to avoid the Caltrain railroad standards by utilizing crossovers in lieu of what's required for a parking track, which is a switch and then a diverging track. So this is noncompliant. This wouldn't be allowed on a railroad. And the reason is, those angle points are designed specifically for the application of a train traveling on one parallel track and crossing over to the other. Putting four of them in a row like that would be a significant issue. First of all, it wouldn't fit, for the reason I just stated on the lengths of it, but from a more fundamental point of view, there's a reason that railroads limit the angle of departure to just over five degrees. This one would double it up at 10 degrees plus, and it would very likely cause a derailment or at the very least, significant maintenance issues. We would never allow something like that, no railroad would. And then the other issue with this is, even if we somehow could get around this problem, the track centers are just much too close to the new track. So the red represents roughly where the new tracks are being constructed today as part of the Great Separation Project. So obviously, there's a single point of a switch where the new track would have to diverge from the existing track, but beyond that, the track needs to be a minimum of 18 feet, and in an electrified environment, 20 feet from an existing track. In this scenario, they'd be less than five feet from a track, which is enough that the ties would overlap and two trains would actually hit each other. In addition, in this case, the MSC wall and dirt that go along with it are starting in this section. So there are locations where this track alignment would conflict with the existing MSC wall. So in summary, the two big issues with this are, one, the use of angle points to kind of work around track geometry. It's not acceptable. There's a reason railroads have that track geometry. And two, track centers are shown as if you could just fit that track in there, but the reality is you can't. You'd have five, six-foot track centers, which would involve collision. Okay, what am I doing there? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So this is hopefully a better illustration of what I just said about the angle. So these things only have one angle that they make them. It's just over five degrees, and that's just how they're made. And so, as I mentioned, these things are 116-plus feet long. It would have to diverge at that given angle, and then it would have to follow the minimum track geometry that is allowed by railroads. In so doing, it would swing all the way over the canal, out of the right-of-way, and would take over 1,000 feet before it would conform back to the existing tracks. And so what you just saw was an attempt to work around this known condition by using angle points, which, again, we can't use on a railroad. So to summarize, the issues are, and there are numerous other issues with option four, but I'll focus on the sort of deal-breaker ones, which are, number one, track centers. We require a minimum of 18, 20, and electrified. In this alignment, it's less than five feet. The trains would impact each other. We can only have one turnout coming off a main line to create a parking track. In this case, four of them are used, including two of them that are back-to-back. This is unacceptable. It would likely result in derailment, and we wouldn't, it doesn't meet our geometry requirements. There's the issue with the columns under the bridge, where it's in conflict with that. You have to be a minimum of eight and a half on a tangent, or straight track, nine and a half on a curve. That's a PUC requirement. And then, I mentioned it before, but these things are not small. They're 116 feet from the beginning to the end. And so although on paper, it's true, we draw them like they're single points of departure, this thing would extend all the way into the Hayward Park platform. It would take out our signals for the platform, and would require us demolishing the southern limits of the Hayward Park Station to accommodate, and that's why it's not viable. So 4B was a variant to the variant, and essentially, this is what we got. It's a little unclear where the access is intended to be, but in essence, the thought was, okay, so assuming that 4A is achievable, why access off 25th, which is how alternative four was previously measured, why not access from the north end? So the answer to that is very much the answer to the previous one, which is, if you can't fit the track in that amount of space, there's no way to fit a track and then an additional access road even further to the east. So everything I just said in 4A applies, the columns, the OCS, the proximity, the length of the curve, et cetera, et cetera. However, this one is even more complicated by the fact, look, that dash line is the right-of-way line. So again, this is just a line showing the curve, but the reality is, this, to add a road behind that would go, essentially, you'd be taking out Pacific Boulevard to make that work, and building a canal, a roof on your canal. So this is a shot. It's kind of dark, I apologize, but it's just to better illustrate that proposition, because I think one of the confusions that a lot of people have had is, you look, you look off of 92, you take a look at the existing right-of-way, and it's a reasonable question, right? Our right-of-ways, we're building a great set out here, and the first question is, well, just leave the tracks that are there. So there are two issues with that. One, even though that's the beginning of our great set, those tracks do conform back in at Hayward Park. So the tracks you see now are going to have a track on them in the future, and that's our, that's our new alignment. And then the other issue has to do with the minimum length of a switch, the fact that there's only one angle of a switch allowable, and that there are minimum curve geometries that have to happen. And so as I said before, this thing would swing 1,000-plus feet out, would require us building a bridge over this canal, another bridge over Burrell Creek, an access road off 25th, move the electrified poles, relocate somehow around Hayward Park, avoid the column at 92, and many other issues. And for all of the above, it's not viable. So to summarize, all the issues from 4A apply to 4B as well. And they just get compounded by the fact that attempting to add an access track, an access road in addition to the parking track that already didn't fit, just means you'd be taking significant right-of-way, including Pacific Boulevard. So the last alternative that was raised, this is called option 29B. Option 29 was to relocate CP Palm, which is a crossover, which is basically the thing that lets us cross trains from one track to another, and from the other track back again. So ninth, the whole space between ninth and fifth is taken up by that control point, and so that, there was a very large cost estimate to move it. So this option is, well, could we avoid touching the control point by diverging the track earlier, meaning south of ninth, cross ninth with a new crossing, and then build the parking track between ninth and fifth? So there's two fundamental issues with this. And then the third, which is logistical, which is, there's just not enough room on the east side to actually build it there. It would again require a right-of-way. But the two fundamental issues with this alternative are, one, the introduction of a third crossing at an at-grade crossing would have to be approved by the California PUC, which their mandate is to improve safety at at-grade crossings. So we would have to petition the PUC to say, we would like to make that crossing less safe, and here's why. And it's highly unlikely that that petition would be approvable, because that's just not their mandate. They're not interested in where a parking track goes. They're interested in maintaining safety at at-grade crossings, and this would be decreasing safety at at-grade crossings. And then the second, and even more fundamental issue with this, has to do with the way that crossings work. So basically, again, so CPUC, gate arms need to be down a minimum of 20 seconds before the train comes to protect vehicles, pedestrians, and bikes from trains, and trains from the aforementioned travelers. It also takes a couple of seconds to physically come down, depending on the size of the gate. And then there's a, there's another time element that needs to be added in the event that the train starts coming and an individual's crossing the tracks. So you have to assume a worst case that someone is partway across the tracks, they're notified, they have to clear, then bing, 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 gates come down, and there has to be 20 solid seconds of safe travel time. So 20 seconds at a constant velocity equals a distance. And so what we did is we say, look, you have roughly 1,000 feet between ninth and fifth available. We need 950 feet to construct a parking track of usable space. However, to get that 28, 30 seconds, whatever the time is, to get those gates down, we would have to push what we call a shunt. A shunt is just a physical device on the track that says, train's coming, drop the gates. It would need to be pushed all the way out here, and then on top of all that, there has to be the acceleration time from a train going 0 miles an hour to 15 miles an hour accounted for as well. When you add those four things up, it's over 700 feet of activation time that's required, and that only leaves less than 300 feet of usable parking track, which, as we mentioned before, is not sufficient for us to actually use the parking track. So we couldn't have a parking track that didn't meet our operational needs, that was only 200-plus feet long, and that's because we have to safely protect that crossing. So again, to summarize, gate downtime, 20 seconds in advance of a train, requires a distance, distance of shunt. And so the train has to be cleared of that. Any train that was on the other side of that would drop the gates at nine for hours on end until that vehicle cleared. The other issue has to do with the grade crossing, which, as I mentioned, is a CPUC requirement, and will be unlikely to be cleared. And as we said, with the gate downtime, the result would be a sub, just a nonacceptable length of assessment. So I'll turn it back over to Casey.
Thank you, Rafael.
Last slide was just a recap of the letter that we sent. We're glad we're meeting here today, hope to have a decision. We noted the timeline here is really, starting on February 29th, would be the start of final design, and then we would complete the design, move it through the different phases in order to stay on track toward a contract in August 2020, keeping the entire parking track, you know, project in line with where we're going with the Great Separation Project. So that's really what drove these dates and why it is critical to make sure we acknowledge them.
And I'll jump in here on a couple of slides. So Brad Underwood, Public Works Director for the City of San Mateo. As council requested, we, the city manager, did send a letter to the Transportation Authority about additional potential funding for this. We got a nice letter from the Transportation Authority rejecting that offer for us to request that additional money, and their big issues are, the funding, current funding is committed to other projects right now that they have, and the need for this type of funding for the Great Separation is greatly outweighs the amount that's available. And in additions, there's like 20 at-grade crossings still be, to be considered in San Mateo County. So that's really the highlights of their letter. Go to the next slide. So one of the things we came up with that might help the community in this, with this track being located here, was maybe some enhancements at the location. So one of those things was a block wall. And so, block wall with, as you can see on the right-hand side, with some ivy on it, that would, that would help with the visual, it would help with the, address the noise and light from like pickup trucks on the other side of the wall, and then just basically a visual improvement at the street level. Some of the residents have indicated that trees would be preferable, so basically, what we need from the council tonight is direction on this. I realize this has been a difficult process for all those involved, and those are the Hayward Park residents, people involved with the Universe of Colors preschool, at Caltrain, and your city staff. But I do appreciate the time and effort put in by all parties, and with that, we'll answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much, Brad, and thank you also to Caltrain. As, before we start our questions, I do want to acknowledge, I appreciate very much how essential Caltrain is to the entire peninsula. Your, tens of thousands of people are being transported, taking thousands and thousands of cars off the road. As Brad just alluded to, you still have dozens of grade crossings up and down the peninsula, which are at, add an extra level of safety concern. We know you don't have enough dedicated funding source. You're sharing the rail line with Union Pacific and with High-Speed Rail. I appreciate all the factors that go into how challenging it is to be Caltrain. I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate the fact that you understand every single one of our residents is concerned about this issue, and everybody really only cares about where it is close to their, close to their home. With that having been said, I know your goal is to double capacity and triple ridership over the next 10 years, and that is an admirable goal that I think everybody wants you to But tonight, we're just going to talk about how we get through this particular project. Any questions from my fellow council members at this time before we go to public comment? Nope. No, no. I'm going to say thank you again, because I called you to make some of these words that you just used shorter, so that I would understand them. I understood a number of things. First and foremost was that your number, your number one concern as you're designing this new piece of track is safety, and also function, which is why the curves were much more difficult to engineer and also less safe. Did I understand that correctly from our phone conversation the other day? Because you used a lot of bigger words, and I had to make them smaller words. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our public comment period and ask for the two presentations to come forward. Madam Clerk, did you decide which is going first?
Yes, I flipped a coin, and Hayward Park is first.
There you go. Thank you so much.
With the Hayward Park organized presentation, please step forward.
We will, we'll give you 15 minutes, and you let me know what else we need. Thank you very much. Welcome.
I have this one. I think it kind of works. All right. Good evening, council. Good evening, fellow residents. My name is Chris Rousseau. I'm speaking on behalf of the Hayward Park residents, a number of them. I've met with, with all of you and worked with Rafael and staff for the last year on this project, so most of you know me pretty well. A couple of things that you may not know, I've lived in Hayward Park for 19 years, so I'm a longtime resident here and intend to stay for a long time. The other thing you may not know is that my family, it's longtime railroad people. This is a watch my mom gave me this summer. My grandfather and great-grandfather used when they were conductors on the railroad in Vermont. And I've traveled all over the world. I love high-speed rail. I've ridden on high-speed rail in Europe, Japan, China. Lot of benefits there. I have an engineering background. I'm a degreed engineer, mechanical engineering, and I've been a civil engineer, working in practice here at Texas and also here in California when I was an engineering officer for the Air Force. So I'm not a rail engineer, but I've done a lot of big projects and run projects. Let's move ahead. Let's see. How do you do this thing? So what's at stake here today is not just stick a maintenance yard somewhere. This decision is a 100-year decision, and it's not just about a few dollars. This is about introducing a new nuisance in a neighborhood that doesn't have one, unlike every other place on the peninsula. This decision has to be made based on written facts. There's been a lot of verbal and a lot of confusing information for over a year. I would commend Caltrain for their presentation tonight, which, for the first time, had some good drawings and some explicit detail. More of that is needed, right? I also want to remind everybody that this is a sticky decision. I know we've all been at this for a while, but it's not one to be made with expediency, and it's also not one that will just, quote, "go away." Wherever this thing is, there's going to be future construction. It's going to be used as a staging ground. There's also a number of current and pending FOIA requests, which are already a goldmine. There's a lot happening there. Now, for clarity, I want to say this, I'm going to repeat it at the end, you know, we don't want this maintenance area in any residential area, whether it's at the daycare, Hayward Park, downtown, where there's going to be new buildings constructed, whatever. And, there's an "and" there, if it ends up in any residential area, including Hayward Park, then we want the maximum mitigations. We want to make sure there's an effective and collaborative public design review, because this process has been broken. The residents are owed some consideration. So you've had to work with a lot of stuff from Caltrain. It's very difficult, and I don't envy you. Mostly, it's been verbal. I was disappointed at the last study session. You've got a flood of jazz hands verbally conflating a lot of stuff. It's all very complicated. Shouldn't be that way. Engineers should bring you solutions, not problems. You guys have the opposite. You've been just brought a litany of problems. We have some facts to work with. No one is confused about definitions. Last time, we spent a long time about definitions. That hasn't been an issue since the summer. In fact, because we understand exactly what's going on and what this is about, we have such vociferous objections. Couple of other things that are important. Sound walls and mitigations and sites that are proposed haven't been designed. None of the alternatives have been designed. None of the alternatives have been designed, even with what we've seen tonight. The artificial costs that have been used to inflate the alternatives have scared people away from really looking at those, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then finally, because of all this confusion, there's low trust, because the story has changed in writing many, many times. How often will it be used? What activities will be there, et cetera? And our own general plan, specifically around the transit corridor, calls for maintaining and improving the quality of life. And in no case, putting this in a residential area, is the quality of life maintained or is it improved? So I have a, you know, I've been a public servant, as I mentioned, I was an Air Force officer, and I have a, I have a thing about public officials acting in good faith and telling the truth, and that has not always happened. And I have to say, it actually pains me to say that. Last time we were here, Caltrain stood up and said a lot of stuff, and one of the things they said, and I'm only using one example because we only have 15 minutes, one of the things they said was, "Well, with this site access at 92, there's nothing there. We can't even get to the site." When you go there today, you see this picture of a gate and a curb cut giving direct access to the site where we're proposing, the beginning of the maintenance area between 92 and 25th. I'll just let that soak in, right? This thing's been there for years. That gate's there now. It's actively used. It's rusting. It's been there a while. So, one example. You know, as I mentioned, I'm an engineer, and engineers come to find solutions, not problems, and the stuff that the residents have been generating, which by the way, are not designs, are concepts, we've got nothing back but a list of problems. Here's a picture of the option number four. Problem, 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 problem. What's needed is engineers to create solutions at these points that work and are feasible, not to do some drawings that turn out to not be feasible. The assessment that was done addressed a bunch of different areas, some of which Caltrain just touched on. Unfortunately, some of those documents, as much as they thought they were shooting down some of these proposals, actually gave evidence that the solution's feasible. And I want to remind groups, there were working sessions with this group over the last six months, and in November, specifically on November 20th, we were all working for two hours on one option, and we all agreed it was technically feasible, right? Now it's suddenly not feasible. Again, the job of the engineers to make feasible designs, we think they failed to do that. Here is a great diagram, and what's awesome about this is, this math was done by a high school student from Aragon High doing basic trigonometry that everybody in this room can do, because we all graduated from high school. And we using, he's, by the way, I don't know if you made it here tonight, but it's great stuff. He went using Caltrain's own numbers, very specific angles, et cetera, and showed that, you know, the data that Caltrain had previously been given, again, we've just seen tonight's stuff, but the data Caltrain had previously given was showing that this could never work because it would hit these columns. And, you know, right away, we showed just with one placement of this single switch that meets exactly the switch that Caltrain has said they needed, you missed those columns. So this is a, an issue, because Caltrain, in our opinion, has been misinforming the city to justify their position to put it in one place and hoping no one will check. Well, we can all check. Another point with this, in the same document that came to us last week, this diagram was drawn, which I like. I took it with my cellphone. That photo may be the one from my cellphone. But there's three big problems with this. Decisions are made that maximize the impact on the project, covering a huge amount of creek, fails to consider any realignment of the proposed tracks coming from the grade separation. Now, this is an important point. You can't not change the design at all. We're not talking about ripping down the grade separation, but with some minor adjustments in the delineation of the track, it would be easier to accommodate a lower-cost alternative. No one has tried to do that. Here's not what we want. We don't want this thing on the left that Caltrain has showed. We want this thing on the right. And yes, we know that these are not designs, they're not drawings. Imagine what a stack of engineers with AutoCAD could do. They could do this and find ways to do alternatives that are lower cost and comply with all of the design restrictions. Importantly, the design never considered back-to-back crossover switches. I don't even really know what that is, right? We have always only considered the single massive switch that Caltrain said they need. All right. At the core, all this boils down to, you can't argue with a blank piece of paper, and that's all the residents have had to work with through most of this process. Tonight, there's some diagrams that look kind of promising. We just saw them 10 minutes ago. All right. At the end of the day, it's our strong belief that San Mateo cannot make decisions based on incomplete information, nor can you make decisions based on false information. I also want to point out, it's been suggested to the residents by people in public positions that we should just give up and accept this thing as-is, because otherwise, we may not get anything. So first off, that's unacceptable, period. Secondly, there is no case where this thing gets built in Hayward Park or any residential area without mitigations. The residents have not had their legally obligated opportunity to make comments and have an impact on the project. Here is one concept that we want to highlight that's new, because we know you guys want to bring some new information. And the new information is, when you're looking at sound walls in areas like Hayward Park, let's inset it from the fence to minimize graffiti risk, because this is going to be a magnet for graffiti people. Let's inset it to add areas for trees and planting. Let's show the whole project area. Now, if you're going to be doing a wall and a road down a couple of blocks, let's put that on the design. But most importantly, let's do a design. This is an important thing. Everything I want to highlight, that we've traded over the last few months, pictures and stuff, almost all of it has been drawn and produced by residents, with the exception, I think Brad produced one slide on the, on the sound wall thing, which was awesome. We haven't seen anything from Caltrain. I mean, I'm not even sure why Brad's doing that. He's managing the project. I'm raising this point to keep it separate from the path forward, because this is a problem. The letter that was sent is problematic. It is inappropriate for one public agency basically to hold another hostage and say, "Do this by a certain deadline or something's going to happen," right? That's essentially what that letter said. It, by the way, repeated two pages of stuff that everybody already knew. It's inappropriate to force this kind of timeline when there are years left on this project. Now, maybe the original deadline of starting construction is September 2020, but there's still a couple of years of construction, and accommodations can and should be made. And this kind of behavior causes me to ask questions like at the bottom. Is, is this the future of like how rail projects are going to be brought forward through the community all along the peninsula? Is this how these sequent processes are going to be handled? I mean, does every other city that Caltrain touches have to worry about this? Because this process was broken, and now the residents are boxed in a corner because there's no alternative, because of money and timeline. All right. Star Wars, New Hope, right? The new hope is, you know, the City of San Mateo does have actual power here, and people have asked me, "What power do you think we have?" Well, we are, you are the project sponsor. In this letter, Caltrain is asking you for a decision. They are asking you for direction. And I want to highlight, that direction is not specifically limited to Hayward Park. So we want you to give them direction. What might that be, Chris? I'm glad you asked. There's three things we want you to do, and I may go over a second, but we'll be fine. Number one, we want you to direct Caltrain not to begin construction until they've done some designs, not complete full thousand-day designs, but designs that let you make decisions with overhead and profiles and costs, and receive direction to proceed. And they should do it for the alternative at 25th, and they should do it for the alternatives in Hayward Park with mitigation. To help things along, we wrote part of that letter for you. It's in the appendix. Number two, city council should supervise two public design sessions, and by supervise, I mean physically be there. These design sessions should be based on the designs Caltrain would do for these sites above. Why? Couple of reasons. Here, I wrote down, the format of this little tennis match is not really conducive to really resolving detailed technical things. You need whiteboards, you need time to talk, you need time to collaborate. We actually had some great sessions doing that in October and November. The second reason that I didn't write down, but I should have, is that it's been apparent through this process that you, the city leadership, have not gotten all the facts clearly through the process. It's also apparent from separate discussions that the Joint Powers Board has gotten mixed or different signals. Third, third thing we're asking, wherever this thing is, the city should sign a perpetual easement with Caltrain for usage restrictions to control the usage, rebuild public trust at zero cost. Now, you might say, "They would never do that." They're also, though, promising, "This is all we're going to do, this, this, and this." And it seems reasonable that that should be written down somewhere. I'm going to go for just 30 seconds if I may, because I have one more slide. Sorry, I just ran a touch over.
Okay.
Last slide. Takeaway again, look, the community did not have a meaningful public input option. Everything we've been doing has kind of been window dressing with limited ability to change things, right? We're all in a, in a box. Granted, we've had some nice meetings, designs have been proposed, but it's a, it's a narrow box. Secondly, we want city council to complete all three of those calls to action, designs with mitigation, supervised reviews, and an easement. So I'm just trying to be very, you know, kitchen English here. And I'll close with this. I said this before, we don't want this maintenance area in any residential area, and if it ends up in a residential area for whatever reason, including Hayward Park, we want the maximum mitigations, and we want an effective and collaborative design review. So hopefully, I've been simple and consistent. I appreciate the extra minute.
So I have a question for you before you sit down.
Yeah.
Couple of very quick things. One, and if you don't want to tell me, that's fine, but who was it that told you to give up or quit? Because I sincerely hope that...
Well, that was told to me in confidence, and so I, I can't give a name. But it's, it's a public person.
And, second, you've been referring to it as a sound wall, and my understanding is that this is not a, a sound wall. The mitigation is, is a wall, it's intended to be as aesthetically pleasing as possible, but it's, it's not intended to, my understanding. So is it...
So the fact that we're having this dialogue is exactly why we need to write this stuff down and do some designs. It's been called a sound wall, it's been called a wall, it's been called lots of things. The claimed specifications of the wall have moved all over the map. This is the problem, Mr. Mayor. We don't actually know what it is, right?
Understood.
And I don't think, I don't think the council does either.
Mr. Rousseau, thank you so much for your presentation.
You bet.
I'm going to go on to the next presentation. I'll, I'll remind everybody that I'm asking you not to make public noises like that, no, no clapping, or cheering, or booing, or anything else like that. It, it has a chilling effect on other people who might want to share their opinion. We have another presentation to go to at this time, so I would ask our other presentation to come forward, and of course, if you need an additional minute, just ask. You never have to use your full time here. That's, that's one of the rules. It's not, it's not required, but if you need an extra minute, don't hesitate to ask. And I also want to reiterate, I, I know we've heard noises throughout the night and kids have been talking. Everyone is welcome. This is a public process for all of us to participate. If you have kids here and you need to step out to use a restroom or give them something to eat, the, the televisions are on outside, so you don't have to miss anything that's going on in the presentations. And anybody who wants to speak at the end of this, we're going to take all the speaker slips and give everybody an opportunity. With that, please, welcome to, is this from Universe of Colors?
Yes.
Welcome.
All right. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Mayor Gothels, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, city council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk tonight. And at this point, I'd please like to ask all the teachers and parents and families of Universe of Colors to please stand.
Thank you so much for showing the support of our school. My name is Ella, and I'm one of the teachers at Universe of Colors. First, I would like to say that our preschool is located on South Boulevard on B Street, and it serves over 30 families of the community. And our presentation is designed to clear up any misunderstandings regarding the lease agreement that we have with Caltrain. Also, the, show the city council members how devastating choosing option number 27 would be to the community of San Mateo. So we are a bilingual school that offers a Spanish immersion program that feeds into the surrounding neighborhood elementary schools. We provide children with the tools and experiences that they need to grow and develop in a nurturing and loving environment. So right now, we serve up to 30 students. We have an all-day daycare for two- to five-year-olds. Then also, we offer an after-school program for kids up to fifth grade, summer camps that we also offer, and sometimes we also have kids up to 10 years old there. We currently employ seven people, and our director of our school has been a City of San Mateo member for over 25 years. This is our backyard area. It's a beautiful, large area with lots of shady trees and space for the kids to run around. We have a planter box where the kids learn how to grow their own vegetables, and then we eat them during snack and lunch. It's a great opportunity for them to learn all about their environment. They have room to run, to climb. You can see all of the structures that we have over there as well. And it's important that we have this outdoor area, because motor skills are so important in developing children. They're essential for everyday activities such as running, climbing, just dressing themselves every day. And so the outdoor area helps them to gain a sense of confidence in their bodies, their surroundings, with nature. We teach them all of that over there at Universe of Colors. And we have all this space that we use for sensory, sensory tables. We do obstacle courses there. It's all this beautiful space that the kids are able to enjoy. So as you can see in the fence in the little bit, I don't know if I can point to it, but at the back fence, there's a lot of space in front of the, in the back of the school for the train to go by, and so the kids, when they see the train going by, it's not so close that, you know, it's right there against the fence. There's a little bit of space, and the kids just see the train coming, and they run and they chase, you know, the trains. They try to race the trains, and they peek through the little holes in the, in the fence and just, it's the highlight of their day. Every single time the train comes by, they just have so much fun. It's a great learning opportunity for them. We use counting techniques with the trains as well, with how many, you know, we count how many of the freight trains go by. It's just a great, great time for them. And this is Bry. She's going to continue talking.
Thanks. Hello. Thank you. My name is Bry. I'm a parent to one of the students at Universe of Colors who's been attending for over a year and a half. We love the school there. They understand my son, and if he needs a little extra patience, maybe a pullout, and I really, that means a lot to me as a parent, that my son is in nurturing hands all day long when I'm working. It provides me a great peace of mind. Our second child will be going there in a couple of months, and he is so looking forward to it. He's been attending drop-off and pickup for the last two years. He thinks he's a big kid, and he should be there, so he's really looking forward to attending the Universe of Colors. So a little bit more about our backyard. The area is located on the Caltrain right-of-way and has been leased from the property owner and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board since 2007. So pretty longstanding. It's set back far from the train tracks. As you can see, there's a tall... As you can see, there's a tall privacy fence. On the other side of that fence, between the Caltrain tracks and the grass, are mature old-growth trees. And there's several trees just lining that fence between the grass and the Caltrain tracks. It's the privacy fence, a bunch of trees, actually a chain-link fence, and then space for the Caltrain tracks. Sorry. Where do I direct, point this to? Oh, there, got it. Okay. So what does option 27 look like? Well, we know it starts at 16th Street, and it hugs the buildings from Hudson's Auto all the way down through the Universe of Colors, where it then starts to taper off. Caltrain representatives came to the Universe of Colors about a week and a half ago to kind of help us visualize how much of the preschool's backyard would be used for the maintenance track. And it was then that we learned, oh, the entire thing. We thought maybe it was half. No, it's the entire thing. There's a little bit of sliver of land. It might even go past the wheelchair ramp that's right next to the building. So I asked, well, is a sound wall an option? You know, there's residential areas, it's mixed-use buildings, kind of running that area. And they said, no, no. It is so close to the buildings that there's actually concern that peace of mind structural at 180 South B Street is actually over the boundary and may be clipped by the new boundary for this maintenance track. So what does this look like in our backyard? Well, everything that's red would be the new maintenance track, parking track, whatever the term is. It's another third train track. And so, it'll be the entire backyard. So you can kind of see, on the far right, there's a little bit of non-highlighted red area. So it's the entire thing. So what does this mean for the Universe of Colors? Well, it'll close the Universe of Colors. California law mandates that preschools have outdoor play areas for the kids to do all of these developmental, well, to run, have that space. And there used to be an exemption that you could apply for if you had sufficient indoor space for a gymnasium. However, that exemption's no longer available, and the, there's just no space inside. All of the existing space is used for classrooms. Sorry. I don't need to struggle on this. Could you just... Thank you. Okay, so who would be immediately affected by this? Thirty, over 60 families. So you have the 30 families of currently enrolled students, you have the seven employees who will need to look and find new jobs, then you have the 30-plus families that are already on the waitlist. Actually, all spots are full and reserved through August 2021. So they're waiting for next year's five-year-olds to go to kindergarten, and those spots are already reserved. So even if families could find alternative childcare, there would still be impact. And speak more about that is Stephen.
Thank you all for taking time to focus on this important issue. I'm Stephen, I'm another parent at the University of Colors. I'm also a professor at the University of California, San Francisco, where I study in part genetic diseases of childhood development. And so, I wanted to speak to the impact of daycare closures, both from that perspective and from my personal perspective. I've been a Bay Area resident for about 15 years, but I just moved to San Mateo a year and a half ago and had to find new childcare solutions for both my sons, and watched both of them take time to adapt to that new situation. And these can be really disruptive events in a child's life, and so I wanted to highlight some research that shows that from the National Academy of Sciences. And so, it's well-understood that really the most robust way to raise children is with stability and childcare arrangements. And so, one quote from an entire research study on child development states that, "The stability of childcare providers appears to be particularly important for young children's social development, an association that's attributable to attachments that are established between young children and stable providers." We all know this, those of you that are parents, understand the importance of being connected to children, obviously. A more recent study that focused on the best practices in early childhood education emphasized that instability in caregivers can cause a child to demonstrate aggressive behaviors and become socially withdrawn. And the current best practices for early childhood education indicate that you should try to align caregivers, care principles, and peer groups as long as possible until the eighth grade. A study that focused specifically on the closure of childcare facilities and the impact on children indicates that this closure event is particularly disruptive because it disrupts not only the childcare environment through caregivers, but also the peer group. You know, my son and this whole community of the Universe of Colors is very close. They're playing out in the hallway tonight, they're so excited to see each other. And when a daycare closes, it just completely upends a child's life. And for children that are as young as three years old, this can be extremely disruptive. And so, I just wanted to share that, you know, I guess I'll end with one last anecdote. You know, teacher Ella mentioned that the trains and how much the kids love the trains. And those of you that are parents know how challenging it can be to get a three-year-old out of the car in the morning. And one of the main ways that I try to do that is by advocating that maybe we can see a train, and that invariably gets him out of the car seat. So I have a personal thank you to Caltrain for that.
Great, thank you, Stephen. Hi, my name's Andy Curtis, and I have a son currently attending Universe of Colors. And I live in the nearby 19th Avenue Park neighborhood here in San Mateo. So now that we understand the direct effects to the immediate families impacted by closing of Universe of Colors, I'd like to discuss the broader impacts to the rest of San Mateo. So there's an ongoing childcare crisis in the Bay Area. Childcare is just super expensive here. Everyone with young children can tell you that. And in fact, the median cost in San Mateo in 2018 was just over $1,900 a month. This is pretty insane, and this is actually going up, you know, even faster than housing prices. And even for the, you know, few families who can afford the market rate, getting your kid into childcare is still difficult because the average waitlist time is two years now. So that means that parents really do have to sign their newborns up for preschool. And I know everyone on the city council is well-aware of this. I know that you made increasing childcare priority in 2017. I thank you for that. And as part of this, I know you have like a loan program to help create more daycare facilities, to allow facilities to expand. And my understanding, this is gonna create about 86 spots so far, and this is great. I hope that we see more of this. But the problem with this promise is it just will take years to truly be successful. And, you know, we don't want to see a school close and kind of handicap ourselves. And there's a few, before we're closing, I'd just like to address why relocating the preschool isn't possible, nor in my opinion, is it even a good idea. And so, there's a few complications with closing Universe of Colors. First, the first, you know, is where's the new location gonna be? Finding a suitable location is difficult. Zoning for large daycare facilities is fairly restricted, and there's not that many places in San Mateo where a 30-student preschool can even be located. There's also a high financial cost. Renovating the current building costs over $200,000 four years ago. This includes, you know, the things like the standard improvements, like making classrooms, making players for the kids, planting grass in the backyard. But daycares are highly regulated environments, so this also included adding a sprinkler system to the entire building, including the upstairs apartments, making it ADA compliant, adding water filtration more. So along with these, just, you know, upfront startup costs, you also have that the rental rates are high in San Mateo, as everyone knows. And it's gonna be very hard to make the numbers work when you're signing a lease at today's market rates. And then finally, even if we had the best managed, you know, relocation, close here and open up, there's inevitably gonna be some downtime. And almost all the students at Universe of Colors have two working parents, and the downtime just is not really a possibility when both parents work. And finally, let me advocate that I think Universe of Colors is at a great location. It's very close to the Hayward Park Caltrain station, so parents can drop their, you know, drop their students off at school and then take the train to work. I myself do this every day. I walk, we walk over, we do the 10-minute walkover. I drop them off school, and I ride the train to work. Also, there's many nearby after-school activities. There's Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, Taekwondo, music lessons that students can go to after school. Safeway is nearby, too. And, you know, these clustered amenities reduce the amount of trips people have to do, because you can go get your groceries at Safeway and go pick up your kid in one trip. And this, you know, we all know that traffic is a problem in San Mateo, so this helps to reduce that. And then, just finally, the one thing I want to point out is that the city has approved or in the process of approving a lot of housing nearby. So in about, you know, over the next several years, about 2,000 new housing units will be created within a 10-minute walk of Universe of Colors. Like I said, I walk my son to school every day, and I hope more parents can have this opportunity. Like, I hope that people who live in these new units can have the opportunity, you know, playing superheroes while walking my son to school is often the highlight of my day. The games we play, the running, jumping, pretending to be the Hulk, we couldn't do that in a car, and so I hope more parents can have that opportunity. So to conclude, I ask you, please do not vote for option 27. In our opinion, it makes San Mateo a worse place for families. It will cause this preschool to close, which is very disruptive to, you know, everyone involved, as we talked about, and it'll remove childcare from this rapidly growing neighborhood. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for hearing our viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. And at this time, I'd like, anyone else who would like to speak during the public comment period, to raise your hand. Looks like around a dozen more speakers. I'm gonna ask each of you to speak for about a minute. We have to hold it to that, or we won't give everyone an opportunity to speak. We did hear from a lot of people in the last meeting, we did, so we've heard a lot of opinions. We've also heard two very interesting perspectives. So if you're just going to repeat, or you just agree with one of the speakers who already spoke tonight, you can just tell us that and save the rest of the time for someone else. I appreciate it very much. With that, if you haven't already turned in your speaker slip to the clerk, please do so right now. And she's gonna call three names at a time. The first person should go to the microphone, and the next two people should go and line up next to the American flag. I'm gonna keep it to one minute, but again, I'm sure most of you can articulate your opinion in shorter than that. Thank you.
Okay, the first speaker will be Christine Padilla, followed by Cole Counterfox, and then Kevin Hurren.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. I'm going to speak as quick as I can. I am Christine Padilla, and I'm the Director of Build Up for San Mateo County's Children and a proud San Mateo homeowner. As you know, Build Up is a collaborative countywide initiative designed to grow and improve the supply of childcare and preschool facilities. The current ECE facilities landscape has a tremendous shortage of early care and education facilities for all ages and income levels that impact families, children, and our economic prosperity. Lack of facility space is the number-one barrier for childcare providers. Competing for space in this competitive real estate market makes it very difficult for childcare providers to open and expand. Potential program operators search unsuccessfully for years for a usable, affordable space. Many give up, while others endure extreme expense and timelines to develop a facility. I want to highlight this because if a childcare center loses its facility space, and/or due to a rent increase or property sale, for many other reasons, it's a very real chance that it will not be able to reopen. This is part of our struggle to advocate to open and expand, but also to make sure we preserve the childcare spaces that are currently serving our families. Thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cole Counterfox, followed by Kevin Hurren, and then Lisa Diaz-Nash.
Thank you. My name is Cole Counterfox. Question for you. You know what air rights are?
Sir, sir, if you could address the council?
Oh, sorry.
I'm just here to hear, listen to your public comment. This is the public comment period. Thank you, sir.
All right, okay. Mr. Mayor, are you familiar with air rights?
I might be able to answer all your questions at the end, but...
All right.
I'll write down your questions, and we'll try to get to them.
How can, how can they maintain a sidetrack if they don't have any air rights to go into the city? By that, I mean, you're gonna have noise, lights at night, smoke, and everything else like that, and they don't have permits to do that. Does the, does the city council dictate what goes on SP tracks or Caltrain tracks? No. Then how can SP and Caltrain dictate what goes on in, goes into the city? Smoke, noise, light pollution, and things like this. They don't have the resources for that, they don't have the legality to do that, they don't have any permits to do that, and they can't clear it. You don't tell, you don't tell Caltrain what equipment to put on their tracks, and they can't tell you what they're gonna put into your city.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Kevin Hurren, followed by Lisa Diaz-Nash, and then John Carlisle.
Hello. My doctorate is in English. I have two master's degrees and a bachelor's from Stanford. So I'm interested in language. Caltrain, I'm not gonna say they've been lying, but they have been misleadingly parsimonious with the facts on a number of occasions. In earlier this year, we were told that the Hayward Park set-out track would not be used much because it would be the only one that was electrical, that was electrified. Okay, sounds great, until you ask, how long is that going to be the case? They're in the process of electrifying the entire system, and by their own website, CalMOD, they expect to have that the entire system from San Francisco to Tamiyan electrified by 2020, the end of 2021. At the last meeting on this, Councilmember Lee asked, is there any evidence to support concerns by residents that this will negatively affect property values? The response was essentially, we have no information to suggest that. In fact, they do. The other thing I would say just quickly is that everything Raphael said about the 5th to 9th Avenue's area was predicated on the notion that it was an at-grade crossing. And we know, and eventually, that's not going to have to be, that's not going to be an at-grade crossing, you're gonna have to do a grade separation. And so, if they're gonna do it at Hayward Park now, they're then gonna have to change that rail.
Thank you, sir.
So we really need an EIR to find out what the real costs of this are.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Lisa Diaz-Nash, followed by John Carlisle, and then Pamela Campos.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for your interest. I urge the city council to do five things on this issue. Number one, be the voice of San Mateo residents, especially Hayward Park residents, and ensure a balanced and fair conversation with Caltrain on the parking track issue. Number two, press for a dedicated environmental impact report and cost audit of the maintenance sidetrack project itself, not as part of the larger grade-crossing project. Number three, importantly, consider additional restrictions to the current proposed site to mitigate the noise, dirt, and other environmental challenges that residents will face with this project, as well as, very importantly, with any additional unforeseen impacts, how do we deal with those today? Number four, continue to look for additional sites for the project with more realistic cost estimates and more suitable locations. And number five, for the entire city, proactively develop a city-wide Caltrain strategy and standard Caltrain project notification process. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is John Carlisle, followed by Pamela Campos, and then Michael Nash.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you. I'm a lifelong resident of San Mateo. I was born in 1965 in Mills Hospital, so I've seen a lot of change go on in this city. Some of it good, some of it bad. One thing I would like to point out, and I think I speak for most of the Hayward Park residents, is that we have not had a collaborative experience here with Caltrain. This has not been transparent, and it has not been collaborative. Our democracy requires compromise to succeed in dealing with difficult situations, and I don't feel like we're getting that at this time. And I urge you to represent us residents, don't let us be herded like sheep to what Caltrain feels is in their best interest to achieve their ends. Thank you.
Next speaker, Pamela Campos, followed by Michael Nash, and then Rebecca Butler.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Pamela Campos, and I work with the Child Care Coordinating Council for C's of San Mateo County. Every day, we serve families and childcare providers, such as Universe of Colors preschool, who work tirelessly to provide a quality upbringing for the youngest members of our community. It is these individuals who truly understand the unfortunate realities and hardships faced by the early care and learning community. With a critical shortage in the workforce and insufficient spaces for early care and learning, families in this city and across the county are forced to wait months or even years before a spot becomes available to enroll their child in a high-quality environment for early care and learning. Over the years, research has demonstrated the vital importance and necessity for families to have access to nurturing, high-quality, early care and learning spaces in their community. During the first five years, we know that nearly 75% of the brain is developing. Without a shred of doubt, we recognize that this critical period of every human being's life cements the foundation for their future. With your voice, there is power, and I'm asking you, please utilize this power to ensure that children... ensure that children and families are not displaced. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Nash, followed by Rebecca Butler, and then Deborah Genevieve.
Good evening. Quickly, I want to reiterate the need for better notification. I understand this is not the first time that process has been used to the detriment of public input. Secondly, I recommend that the city employ a third-party independent resource to evaluate all the confusion around both the engineering and the cost estimates. We ought to have the facts to make this decision. Thirdly, I think Caltrain should legitimize the use of their property for their childcare playground. If it's so important to the, to the school, we need to make sure that two years from now, they're not tossed out because Caltrain changes their mind about encroachment on their properties. That should become a legal agreement that lasts for a long time. And finally, I think that I reinforce the idea that we ought to have a very clear idea about permissible uses for a sidetrack. I understand that there are quiet mode procedures for that. We ought to have them here. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rebecca Butler, followed by Deborah Genevieve, and then Josephine Christensen.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Saul Butler. I'm a Hayward Park resident and a supporter of public transit. I appreciate your service to our city and your time. I find two things about this deeply disturbing. The first is the false premise of meaningful public comment in this project. The second is the changing story and description of the project, which is well-documented in communication with Caltrain over the months. Both of these acts deeply disrespect the residents, staff, and leadership of this city, and the notion of a well-executed public transit project. I support the request of the Neighborhood Association with regard to slowing this process and allowing for authentic consideration of options. I want to especially emphasize the importance of an easement and specifying the use of this maintenance area, or parking area, or set-out track, or whatever it may be. Clarity and long-term commitment to specific use and writing on that should not be controversial or a point of resistance by Caltrain. If there is resistance, I ask that the city council ask themselves why that is the case and take appropriate action. If we get to the point where mitigation is the best option, please choose a strategy that maintains the San Mateo life quality, adds trees to our communities, and demonstrates a commitment to balancing residential business and transit considerations, which will allow our city to be a model of what modern, smart, inclusive cities should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Genevieve, followed by Josephine Christensen, and then Kaye Osterbach.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm a 20-year resident, and Caltrain is my favorite mode of transportation in the Bay Area. But I want to raise another perspective that has not been discussed yet, and it speaks to the quality of life impacts and why we don't want to have this maintenance yard or parking track set in a residential area. And that's because of increased traffic. It sounds as though one of the options is that Caltrain wants to set this between 10th and 14th Avenue and use 9th Avenue as the access point to this maintenance yard. So we're going to see increased traffic. If Caltrain moves forward with the plan to access the site from an entrance adjacent to the 9th Avenue grade crossing, what studies has Caltrain or the City of San Mateo completed to ensure that this movement of maintenance trucks will not have further aggravation in an already-growing traffic problem at 9th Avenue? Consider the following: The City of San Mateo has approved high-density housing at locations near 9th Avenue, the corner of 9th B, a brand-new complex. So think about the electrification of trains and the increased frequency of trains, what that means for the choke point, including the, all the new trucks coming to the area. So please, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Josephine Christensen, followed by Kaye Osterbach, and then Diana Barone.
Good evening. Caltrain clearly anticipated neighborhood resistance to the proposed relocation to Hayward Park, deliberately publishing notification of the project in the Santa Fe Mercury and effectively preventing our neighborhood from having any input during the CEQA public review. Caltrain only scheduled the June meeting after public outcry brought the situation to the attention of city government. At the first meeting, they told us the purpose of the set-out track is to create a storage place for tampers, regulators, stabilizers, ballast cars, and flat cars, and will likely be used one to two days per week. Now, we're here, a new name for the set-out track. They say they're not going to use it as storage for their equipment, that they probably won't even need to use it the first few years. They say that the soil spoil was tested and was passed. And, I'm sorry, that's, that came from an area where the creosote-soaked railroad ties were embedded in that soil for decades. Sorry, I don't trust Caltrain, but I do trust San Mateo City Council to uphold your sworn duty to your constituents and protect us. Thank you.
Next speaker, Kaye Osterbach, followed by Diana Barone, and then Drew.
Thank you so much. The goal of any city council, in this city council, is to build a community, and this is not how it's done. This is a large job, $180 million. Sounds like a lot of money. We are owed some very basic things. We are owed real drawings. We are owed real plans. We are owed, we are owed real public review, real public comment, real third-party review, and transparency for the entire project.
Next speaker, Diana Barone, followed by Drew, and then Tatiana Vogel.
Hi, I'm from [inaudible].
Oh, okay, thank you. Drew is next, followed by Tatiana, and then Olis Clinton.
Thank you.
Good evening. Given the one minute, there'll just be two things. One, I've talked about this before, is just the need for the City of San Mateo to have a quarter-wide study for the Caltrain track from 9th Street South because of the passing tracks that will include the preschool being affected in 20 years, and from 92 North, the grade separation, because these will impact and will be back here again, and to fold that into the general plan. The second part, I do value, in general, I've had good interactions with staff on, on my original issue, Hillsdale, the South Side, and all the impacts for the hundreds of homes that are being impacted in our values and safety and stuff with the station move, move north. But you know, I also can relate to the transparency issue on one item. There's a land-use study that was done along the entire Caltrain corridor, and the parking lots on the West Side at the current location have not been classified correctly as station right-of-way. They're classified as just general-use property. It's the only station in the entire corridor that this is the case. I keep wondering why, and I keep running into like, well, you know, duh-duh. We need those parking lots for the long term because we, the passing tracks will wipe out all the brand-new parking that will be built. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tatiana, followed by Olis Alisa.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'll try to keep it short. I hate public speaking, so this is hard, but I just wanted to speak up. I represent Universe of Colors Preschool, and I had a pretty bad day at work, where, you know, as a woman, I feel that it's sometimes hard to be a woman in business and constantly have to prove that you're enough. But I don't want to pull that card. I just want to celebrate women of Universe of Colors. It's a preschool run by incredible, strong, beautiful women, and anybody who was on a hunt for a good preschool, they know how hard it is to trust your child to someone. And as a working mom, my life is scheduled by a minute, so I know that I can rely at that institution more of a family than institution. So I just hope you can help us and consider not to vote number 27. Thank you.
And the last speaker card I have is for Olavisa Clinton.
Hi, I'm Olavisa Clinton, also a parent at Universe of Colors. One point that I wanted to make and supplement to the presentation that was made earlier is that the $200,000 that the owner of Universe of Colors invested in the facility and the immediately surrounding area to improve it and make it compliant with codes for a daycare center at the requirement of the city and the county of San Mateo, that was made in the form of a loan. So if the center is shut down as a result of this modification to the adjacent track, then that loan still has to be repaid, and it's being repaid currently by the income from the school. So, you know, that would be a devastating financial impact on the owners of this school, and something which really needs to be taken into consideration.
Thank you so much. With that, is there anyone else who wants to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, sir. If you would, fill out a speaker slip afterwards. Thank you. You can speak first.
It's not going to be long. I just want the record to reflect a gesture that was done by Rafael earlier during the first presentation. He air quoted when, the question was refused to be declined as a public figure, and that arrogance and that, that lack of respect had been throughout the process, and that's just an illustration of that from Caltrain.
Thank you, sir. If you would turn in your speaker slip when you're done filling it out. With that, I will close the public speak, public comment period and bring it back to the council. Before we move on to public council comments, I want to follow up on a couple of questions that were raised. First, and I'm going to try to get at what the speaker was getting at, which is air rights. So this project is all being done on Caltrain land, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's, it's Caltrain land, you own it, it's your right-of-way. You could do essentially what you want there. You could go forward with this project without us, but we are contributing financially because we applied for some of the funding that will, we as, as a city, and as residents, and as constituents, we have an interest in making sure that Caltrain is electrified and that ridership and capacity go up. So we've been sponsoring the, the improvements throughout San Mateo, and that includes the grade separations, right?
That's correct.
But it's your land, you can move forward on this project.
Yes, we could.
And the air right, I mean, that includes the air rights above it. I think, I do think that the question was getting at something else, which is, are there environmental impacts, health impacts, that will affect surrounding neighborhoods? Do you want to answer that question?
No.
You filed a negative declaration because whether, whether you put it here in the Hayward Park neighborhood, or whether you put it next to the childcare center, it's not going to have negative health impacts on people who are just next to the, the Caltrain.
That's correct.
The, I think I asked this last time, but when it comes to light and noise, is there any indication that the light or noise will be greater than the light and noise from the regular trains that are on these tracks?
No, the trains that are out there today certainly run more frequently and are louder than the activity that's ever expected there.
There was, okay, one additional question. There was some indication, or one of the speakers talked about this increasing traffic, right, in this neighborhood? Is the use that is intended by Caltrain going to somehow increase traffic in that The use that is intended, it's not going to be cars, it will be trains or something?
No, the use that's intended there is that it would be a set-out track that is electrified, and that it would not be used at all possible because that would be an area that would be reserved in case a train was broken down. And the chance that it needs to be used temporarily for something to be there is not going to be a large truck that we've talked about before, especially because there'll be the overhead wires. So there certainly would be not an increase in traffic all of a sudden because of this project.
Great. Thank you very much. Other councilmembers, any questions, or we can go to comments. Any questions first? Questions? Diane?
I want you to respond to the slide that came from Mr. Bressot that said all you had to do was go out just a little farther, and your problem with interfering in the columns on 92 is solved. And also remind me, was there a cost estimate for this idea that you're only going over the canal for a short period of time as opposed, a short length, rather, as opposed to a long, thousand-foot distance?
Yeah, sure. So as I mentioned before, I might have sped through this, but these switches are not single, they're not an angle that exists in two dimensions that just depart. These things have a physical length. So the drawing, actually, the drawing he showed did actually show it, I think, six, I may have misread it, but it showed about 6.125 feet from a column, which actually is in conflict with a column, because you have to be eight and a half minimum on a tangent and nine and a half on a curve. So even that one did show it in conflict. But in general, I think the mistake that's being made is the assumption that these, they're not single just lines that diverge in, in zero space. These things are big, they take up 116-plus feet, so they have physical space. So the idea that you can just show it like was shown in that presentation, like it's just a diverging angle and it can thread around the column is just not accurate. They have space, and it would hit the, the column. Now, you could move it, and it just makes all the other problems, I say, even worse because now you're going even further into the canal. And I think you had a question about the cost estimate over the canal as well. So yeah, we did look at an estimate, which was in the, I believe, $13 million range. And so that estimate included essentially covering several hundred feet of the canal so that you could build a track on top of it. It included a track and road bridge over Burrell Creek and some other improvements. And again, $13 million is above the money currently budgeted for this project. So just, just really briefly on the estimate, so we have done a box covert fairly recently in San Bruno. We have done a retaining wall similar to what would be proposed as a change order on the 25th Ave, grade separation. So these are fairly contemporary estimates that we have.
But just so that I understand, what you're telling me is, engineering-wise, it's not feasible to do the shorter version.
Yes.
And as such, then you go to 1,000 feet over the canal and 13 million. Do I?
Yeah, no, that's right. That's exactly right. That's pretty much the punchline right there. I mean, it's, yeah.
Did you have something you wanted to add to that, or?
I think she was just giving me the cutoff signal. No, so that's exactly right. I mean, you're, you're correct. I mean, basically, on, on paper, a line working around may work, but that's not what these things look like. That's not the right application for the technology, and it doesn't work.
I may have more, but I, I know you've got some, so let me, let me ponder.
Yeah, I just have one question. You know, there's no doubt that your engineering team has significant expertise in engineering railroads, but I, but I do understand that, you know, there's a lot of lack of trust within the community. I'm just curious for, for staff, do we ever consider or look into having kind of some of these analysis audited by a, a third party just to kind of say, hey, look?
No, we did not consider. That is not appreciated.
Would that be, what type of effort would that be? Not to have all the new drawings, but just to have somebody else that knows what's going on that really doesn't have a horse in the race just to say, yeah, you know, these look right, or, you know, we could improve upon it here or there.
Last, Brad, Director of Public Works, Brad Underwood, to address that.
Yeah, I haven't given that much thought. I will say that Caltrain's designer is a third-party, is it HDR?
HDR.
HDR design company that designs railroads, so they're the ones that have looked at this as well. So, you know, it would take probably some time and, and obviously some, some dollars to do that. I can't really give you a number off the top of my head.
Okay. And one last question I had. When I met with you the last, before the first study session, I remember I specifically asked if the, the school had any official arrangement with Caltrain, and was there any lease or anything? And the definitive answer I got was no, not at all. But one of the speakers said that they actually had a lease, and so I'm trying to figure out what, what's right there.
Yeah. So there is a document that is a lease. There is additional area in the, the backyard that is likely not on a lease, but for us to get down to the specificity of exactly what is and what isn't, we would need to do a survey, we'd need to do additional analysis. So there is an arrangement, but exactly where that line goes, it is likely something we can't determine at this moment. It would take more work for us to do that.
Okay, thanks. If there are no further questions? Oh, questions from Councilmember Lee?
I was hoping you could tell us more about the deadline and, and I was hoping you could tell us more about the deadline and what the, what the cost would look like in extending a deadline.
Well, I think part of that would depend on how far out you would go. I mean, certainly, the deadline that was indicated in the letter was based on looking back at the end of when we think the 25th Avenue grade separation project would be complete. And along with that project, you have all of the things that are baked into it. So a project manager, someone that's overseeing the construction. And so for the parking track, that would all be part of that whole package that's there. If you start to move beyond this date, then you start to separate the activities that would be associated with the parking track from the problem, from the bigger project, which certainly then adds cost, because you won't have the same efficiencies you have as one project being built at the same time together. And so if you were to delay this months and months, you know, I really can't speculate, but this is in order to make sure we're using the best use of the public resources that are there for a very large project.
Okay. So extending that, extending beyond the 28th will result in additional costs to the project, regardless of the decision. Okay. My other question is about the analysis. What I've heard from the community, I think, is, is a perception that, that the engineering analysis that was done through Caltrain was done with the intent to show that the alternatives are not possible instead of engineering for a solution. And so I want to understand what the, what the process was in terms of vetting, vetting the alternatives. I think at one point, I heard at one point, and I think we all read also, that 25th Avenue was deemed feasible at one point. And if that's no longer the case, then I think there's more clarification needed.
Sure, can I take this one? Yeah, thank you. So this project, because of the way it was introduced to the community and because of the very natural reaction of skepticism, frustration, all of which I understand, we went sort of the other way and attempted to be as completely transparent as we could. So we opened up a working group with the city, with the public, and we had published all the stuff online on our website, and we did an options analysis where we said, okay, I understand the perception is we've already made a decision here. We will open our expectations to anything that is feasible with the clarity that it has to be between the current tracks that we have in the six-mile window that we have to put in a track. We did that, we came up with, I think there was about 27, 28 alternatives. The city staff added another two on top of that, and then there's a few sub-variants that take this well over 30 alternatives that were studied. So this has not been a passive, this is what we're going to do, and come what may. The frustration is there hasn't been identified another third viable alternative through this process. And so the thing with the alternatives you saw presented, those were looked at, they were looked at when they were called something slightly different, and the geometry was a little different, but it was deemed not feasible, not the least of which was because of the $13.7, I think, million-dollar cost associated with it. There were some other issues associated with that, high-speed rail, environmental, all kinds of other things. The reason, and that one's, that one's my fault, because when you're trying to solve a problem, sometimes you got to take some of the issues and just, just pretend there's a solution to that, just pretend there's a way that we can work around these things. And that was the approach we took to option four and to others, because there was a lot of pushback from the community that it seemed viable. And so we sat down three separate times with a community group, and we walked through what it looked like, and we eventually got to a place where people understood what I was saying with the long thousand-foot design that would be required. What you saw was sort of an attempt to work around that by saying, well, okay, we could just draw a straight line and kind of go around it. So we did look at the design, we did put some cost info into it, we do have a designer, HDR, who did look at this, but at some point, when something's not viable, there's no more designing you can do to design around that problem. These things do have physical space, there are railroad standards, there are physical constraints out there, and this alternative just doesn't work. So again, we've tried, we've looked at 30-plus alternatives, we've engaged, I understand the frustration in the beginning of how this started, but this has been a nine-month affair of being completely open. If there's an alternative that works, we haven't heard it.
Thank you, Rafael. Any other questions from the council at this point? I see no other questions from the council, so now it's time for comments. Eric, would you like to start, or I can start?
I could start. If you like.
So my thoughts have not changed much since our last study session, but I do want to make sure I explain my thoughts and explain my reasoning. First off, although, I mean, I'm not an engineer, and I really wanted to be convinced that, you know, the other options, 4A, 4B, and 29B could work, I haven't seen anything that would make me believe that they could work. But that being said, I would support having a third party review it, just to make absolutely sure, given the history of this project. You know, the official staff recommendation is to put the set-out track right adjacent to one of our oldest neighborhoods. And again, given the history of the project, the lack of outreach from the beginning, the flawed environmental review, it just doesn't feel right for me to support that location. The last option we have would significantly impact a private preschool whose playground is located in the Caltrain right-of-way. You know, my preference out of all these bad options we have, I wouldn't even call it a preference, but I just don't want to just say no to everything, that would be copied out, I have to propose a solution. I think we need to study option number 27 more closely, and perhaps use some of the $1.1 million that we are going to set aside for the wall, that really nobody wants, I mean, it's kind of consolation prize, to use to help this important preschool find a more appropriate location that's not on the public right-of-way. This is the least of the bad options to choose from, in my opinion. As I mentioned in the last meeting, nobody wants to be on record as supporting the, forcing a preschool to give up their play area. But I don't feel that it's fair to the Hayward Park neighborhood that we don't even consider that, that option. And an additional benefit of focusing on option 27, as we brought up last time, is that would trigger a, this time, more comprehensive environmental review, and community staff, community and staff would have a seat at the table from the very beginning. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Eric. I guess at the beginning, I want to say that I just don't find it to be palatable to close down a childcare center. Our community needs daycare centers too much, and I do represent the residents of San Mateo and all of our constituents, and I feel like that is the greatest need that I see for the city of San Mateo, is to protect that childcare center. But I also think that we all rely on Caltrain for many of the reasons that people brought up tonight. I want to take an even further step back and say that when we approach these issues as a city council, it is incredibly challenging. This is not the reason anybody runs for city council, is to make decisions that are going to have impacts on people, that people really feel strongly about. We do this with airplane noise, we do this with train noise, we do it with the wastewater treatment plant and underground storage basin, we know the headaches that that was. We even do it when it's a second-story addition, and we have two sets of neighbors who come out and feel extremely strong that if you allow that second-story addition, it's going to ruin my life. And, and these are the decisions that we have to make as a council, and we do our best not to make it on how it affects us, because, as you can see the empty chair over there, if it does affect us, we don't get to vote on it. So that is my way of saying that this is very challenging, but you have to come back to what are the fundamentals, what are the principles that we're going to apply to a situation like this? So number one, Caltrain is necessary for the peninsula to work. We have to work with Caltrain to make sure that ridership is as high and capacity as high as possible. So there is a strong need for this. The parking track is going to allow for this service to continue and for electrification to continue, and it needs to happen roughly in this location. Second is, how did we get to these possible locations? And from all of my conversations with Caltrain, for all of my reading of the reports, there were two things that were at the top of that list. Number one is safety, and number two is function. So safety and function being the top two issues, when you're looking for where to put this parking track, I understand how you ended up with this location, because it's the straightest, and because you're trying to fit it in between at-grade crossings at 9th and the great, the other great separations that are happening further south, and the stream underneath the ground. So you're trying to put it in the place where it's going to make the most sense, it's going to be the safest, it's going to fit the function, and you're obviously taking into consideration some of the cost. But we also had a conversation back and forth about the impact to residents, neighbors, and everyone. One of the strongest arguments that I've heard about the impact that this has on people who are right next to the track, this is not going to be a significant use compared to the regular use of the track. Caltrain operates on the track all the time, and the daycare center is right there next to the track, and they don't, they don't feel such an impact that they want to move. To the contrary, they want to stay. And so some of the arguments I have a hard time with have to do with the noise and the light and the other things that are normal to Caltrain. When you were doing, Rafael, when you were doing the Four Bridges project, which was a significant build, which are the grade separations at the crossings north of downtown, I lived less than a block from one of those grade crossings. You were doing a ton of the work at night, it was a massive project that took a very long time. I remember the work that went into that because I lived so close to it. I know that while the construction was going on, it was, it was tough on that neighborhood, as it is in every neighborhood that's going to experience the electrification project, which is all of us. And I appreciated that you got that work done within the period of time that you said it was going to get done, and it was on budget. That is a long way of saying, I appreciate that safety was, went into choosing this location, I appreciate that function went into choosing this location. There's going to be some impact to anybody, no matter where this goes, but I haven't heard that it's a health risk, I haven't heard that the uses here will be any more significant than anywhere else. That having been said, I fully support, I fully support a mitigation plan for this neighborhood that includes bringing the neighbors out and asking them what will serve this neighborhood best, from an aesthetic standpoint, something that would not open them up to a wall that could have graffiti on it, that's unacceptable to me. But really, this isn't, this isn't my neighborhood, it's their neighborhood, I want them to speak about what kind of wall, the vegetation on the wall, the trees in front of the wall, and the city will be participating at every stage of this project, just like we've been participating with the neighborhoods at 25th, 28th, and 31st, noticing them on the significant amount of construction that happened in those neighborhoods, noticing them about all of the aspects of this project. We will be here for the long haul to make sure that Hayward Park is served by this project. There were some people who made a point tonight that, long-term, we're looking at grade separations, which could involve raising the tracks through downtown. And I would say that that's, that that's true. That is a long-term project that everyone is looking at, because in order to make Caltrain work, in order for the people on the train to not have to stop at every grade separation, in order for the cars that are at grade separations to not have to stop for 30 minutes waiting for the train to go by, that is the long-term plan that needs to happen. So thank you to everyone who brought that up. I know that is something we're talking about. But based on all of those reasons, I appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood, I do want to work with the neighborhood to mitigate all of the impacts to this neighborhood, but I feel that at this point, it would be unfair to all of the ratepayers, the taxpayers who are footing the bill for this project, it would be unfair to those people who rely on Caltrain, who are San Mateo residents, to work properly, those people who want to make sure that we have a safe rail corridor. And I think in the future, the entire rail corridor is going to be residential, we're all going to be living as close as possible to the train, because the train relies on people who walk there to get there. I appreciate Eric's comments, I'm not willing to shut down the preschool, I think this preschool is too important to us, that would be an even greater impact than anything else that I see. For all of those reasons, I want to move forward in the location that's recommended, but I want to do it with a firm process for the mitigation that serves this neighborhood. Those are my comments. Anyone else?
I, I really appreciate all, the entire community coming out, and I think that, as challenging as it is, I really do feel like public input does elevate our process, and it's a really important part of our democratic process. And so I really do believe that when you, when you make communities, when communities participate, that there is a higher level of accountability. And, and so I really do commend everyone for coming out, and I do think that we're better for this process. That being said, you know, the things that I really am looking for, and as I look to this decision, is I go back to the principle of doing no harm and doing the most good, or doing the least amount of harm and doing the most good. What, what I see from all the evidence that's been provided is that there are no health and safety or even property, property risks that, that have been demonstrated in, in evidence. And, and they would have come through the process very clearly, through the sequelanalysis. And the fact that the sequelanalysis did not show any health and safety risks and/or require any mitigation associated with it, to me, is an indication that, that there is, there is very minimal harm and impact associated with this project. And we've heard numerous times, and it's been reiterated, that there are a dozen of these set-out tracks up and down Caltrain, and, and that there has not been any reported nuisance associated with them. On the dais, I am the only council member who lives within earshot, within just a couple of blocks of the Caltrain station, or Caltrain station and, and tracks. And so I'm well aware of what this nuisance can be. That being said, I really do hear the community calling for further analysis, calling for more time. And, and again, knowing that hundreds of hours of staff time and Caltrain staff, as well as the engineering time through HDR, which is a contractor, has done, and, and the result of that analysis has been that no further analysis will make any alternative viable. So it's hard for me to justify delaying a process and compounding costs if that analysis is already deemed unproductive and unjustified. So for me, I just, we have a responsibility to all of our taxpayers, to every single person in this room, to maximize the value of every dollar, and knowing that going beyond this, this deadline will compound costs, those costs come out of our budget, they come out of the budget for other costs and other projects that, that are in the pipeline and, and committed. I wish that I saw an alternative that, that, and a window for further study. I wish it was easy for me to say that there for further study. I, I wish it was easy for me to say that there, that a third-party analysis was required. I, I, I don't see how more study will get us to a different answer. I think that it's been very, very clearly documented, and it's, the engineering and the geometry don't work. And if you do it again, and it doesn't work, and you do it again, and you do it 27 and 37 times, it doesn't work. I don't see how delaying a process and digging into this analysis will get us a different result. I, I totally agree that, that there were things that were missed in terms of notification, in terms of transparency. I also do see the efforts that were taken to rectify that. And I think as we look forward, and in the strategic planning process, we've talked very specifically about how we can improve the relationship with Caltrain and notification process moving forward. I absolutely see the value in that, and I, and I've heard from the council members that that is a direction that is very strongly supported. Let's see.
Casey and Rafael, could you work with us for setbacks on a wall? The wall would, would be the mitigation here, and if we can set it back from the street enough to put trees in front of it, is that something that could work?
Very likely. I mean, I'd obviously have to confirm that with the designer, but very likely. I mean, we certainly could do something. It just, I don't know if it could go as far as was illustrated, but the concept, I think, works. It's just a matter of how far and what the impact would be.
Trees, yeah. Trees and vegetation. I think that the vegetation is essential to prevent the graffiti.
Right.
Did you have anything else?
Well, yeah.
Before Diane gets her opportunity? Diane, I'd ask you to keep it to 30 minutes or less.
I was just going to say that I, I, I think that all of us are very committed to figuring out what the mitigation will be. I have to speak to myself, for myself. I am very committed to, to a mitigation process. I think that's another rationale for keeping within the timeline. If we keep within this timeline, then my understanding is that we will be able to maximize the, the three-plus months for a community, a community input process, a design process, that, that is as, as transparent and accessible as possible. So, for me, that's another reason why we need to keep to the timeline. So...
Okay. Okay. So, while we recognize that this is Caltrain's right-of-way, I think the city is very sensitive to what our residents might go through and the impact of this, but the city really has to do what it can within its own abilities. I want to thank all involved, and especially the residents. I know we make big bucks being on the city council doing this, but you don't make anything, and you put in a lot of time. And I concur with my fellow council members, you are to be applauded for the effort that has been put in over these last nine months, which included looking at some 30-plus. I had 27 alternatives, but I'll, and I think it went to 29. I'll give you 30-plus. As 30-plus alternatives were explored, and this effort, as we know, included numerous meetings with stakeholders, diagrams, charts, spreadsheets, and at least five public hearings. As many of you know, the history of this project, the 25th Avenue grade separation, was 20 years in the making and a cobbling together of economic resources that was extraordinary. It's a $180 million project. The city is only contributing $12 million. So, many of the other options for the set-out track, if they were viable from an engineering standpoint, like the one we discussed tonight and got some further information on from our last meeting, would result in increasing the city's contribution to this project by upwards of 50 to 100% or more. That became very difficult for the council as fiscal stewards for the city. And so, this decision really involves weighing the potential use with the fiscal feasibility of alternatives and mitigation measures. Caltrain has represented that there will be restricted use. And when we combine this representation with the affordability of the mitigation between 10th and 14th avenues and an entry restricted to 9th Avenue, I think as fiscal stewards of the city, it would seem that we're compelled to pursue the original location rather than moving the track, which fiscally puts things out of reach for us. But I concur, it must absolutely have mitigation measures. I cannot be more emphatic about that in a collaborative way, in a very robust process, so that we get exactly what looks good, what protects, what prevents graffiti. I know our Public Works Director knows that I have some opinions about how walls should look. So, I'd like to weigh in on that process as well. I'm not in the neighborhood, but it is important to me as a resident of the city that it, it not be unsightly. So, again, I want to, I want to hit on the participation in this process. This is not an easy decision. It's not, I've been laboring over this decision. I met with residents as late as yesterday afternoon. It's not been easy. But I feel that we, as fiscal stewards, our hands really are, we came to this perhaps with some tied hands, and let's do the best that we can if the other ones are too expensive.
I want to make two final points. One is, I, I take personal responsibility to notify the neighborhood of the meetings that we're going to have to design and implement this mitigation project. I take personal responsibility to notify you, and I will be at that meeting, and we will facilitate that with Caltrain. Second, and last, I, I want you to know that the hardest phone calls as a council member are from your good friends, who've been your good friends for over 25 years, who live in a neighborhood, and they're deeply concerned about the impact of their neighborhood, and you're trying to explain how you made this decision that they don't agree with. And I think all of us have had those conversations over the last week or two. And it's important that we look you in the eye and tell you how we got here and why we got here. And, and I'm looking you in the eye and telling you, I'm going to work with you moving forward to make sure that we mitigate this project as much as possible and any impact from it. With that having been said, does there need to be a formal vote, or have you, have you received the input that we need from all of us?
Yeah, we're, we have clear input from you, so we appreciate that, and we'll move forward from here.
Thank you. Thank you all for your input and participation. I will continue to work with you in the future. I'm going to close the, the study session. We will start the, the regular meeting at 7:31, 7:31.